Good evening. We are, um, welcome to our board meeting and welcome Dr. Oakley. We will begin our meeting. I'll call on Board Member Betty Jenkins to open us up.
If you would please stand for a pledge and at the ward for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you. Our Board Member Kim Erby is on the phone, so she is with us. We will continue tonight's meetings, uh, meeting by remembering three students who passed away this school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact that they made on the Guilford County Schools' family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Maraz Tatum, Jaquarian Ledbetter, and Daniel Ramirez.
Maraz Tatum was a student with the biggest personality. You knew she was present before she entered the room. Maraz was the life of every classroom and aimed to make those around her smile. Her attitude and liveliness were always a source of positivity. Maraz's outgoing personality connected her with students across her grade level. She would talk to anyone and was often the first to welcome new students. She was willing to befriend anyone and was loyal to her friends and classmates. Maraz radiated love, and to have known her was a privilege. Her memory lives on, and she remains in the hearts of the Ferndale Middle School students and staff.
Jaquarian Ledbetter was a vibrant young man with a contagious smile. He was very respectful of adults and understanding of his peers' feelings. He was also known as JQ or Pooh. He possessed the strength of commitment and was loyal to a fault. Many have shared memories of his playful spirit and charismatic charm. He regularly attended church services with his grandmother and was known throughout the Church family for his big heart. He was a promising student, well-loved by his family, peers, and teachers. He will continue to be missed by the Southwest High School and Scales families, the Pruitt Scales families.
Daniel was a remarkable student at Ben L. Smith High School, always happy, eager to learn, and to excel. Family was everything to Daniel. He was a proud uncle to his nephew, Adriano, very close to his brother Diego. He used to help his brother with his homework and take him and his nephew to school before coming to school himself. Daniel and his brother were working with their father, painting and doing cabinetry work in homes. He worked full-time during the pandemic, and he'd fallen behind with some academic credits. But during the previous school year, he took additional credits toward recovery and was on track to graduate with his peers. Smith High recognized his very hard work with a posthumous nomination for the Student Improvement Award.
Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members or school representatives and attendants to come forward and receive condolences from the board. So if the Ledbetter, Tatum, or Ramirez family are here, support staff or school representatives, we would welcome you to the front.
Are you Jaquarian's brother? Are you his brother? I'm so sorry. Are you his sister? I'm so sorry, sweetie. Hi, how are you lately? Yes, I'm very sorry. I love that nickname. I'm so sorry. It's heartbreaking. Hi, how are you lately? It's good to see you. I'm so very sorry. It's the hardest part. So sorry. Too many times. Even one is too many, isn't it? I'm so sorry. Yes, thank you for all y'all do, to support families through this, and students. The hardest part.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And finally, tonight, we will recognize our July Employee of the Month, Jimmy Fulton. Will you please come to the podium? Something made me want to say, will you please come down? Jimmy Fulton is all that and a bag of chips, so begins one of several nominations for Fulton, a network analyst in the Technology Services Department who was named the July Guilford County Schools' Employee of the Month. Jimmy was praised for his kindness and patience when helping customers at the district's central offices with their technology needs. Jimmy is one of the most responsive colleagues that I know, says DeBrel Toure, Director of Academically Gifted Department. He was invaluable this year as my department implemented online assessment for the first time, and he helped to ensure that students at the virtual academy were able to take the assessment at Washington Street. She continued, "He spent hours verifying devices ahead of time and was present during testing to help troubleshoot. He is a problem solver, has a calm and soothing demeanor, and never makes you feel that you're a bother." Jimmy received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s during the month of July. His photo will hang at the district's central offices, at Technology Services, and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Pat Tillman to read aloud the certificate honoring Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I typically take this liberty to do this. I usually highlight a couple, a few words that I think are very important because they're from your peers and those that you work with and for. Kind, patient, responsive, calm, and soothing, invaluable. So, Mr. Fulton, at this time, I'm going to read the certificate, but I wanted to just lift up those words that, uh, obviously are well-deserved from your peers, and we thank you, uh, for all that you do for our, our children. On behalf of this school board, Guilford County Board of Education, our superintendent and our Chairwoman Hayes, we are proud to present this certificate of recognition to you, James Fulton, and Technology Services for Employee of the Month. And also sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s, which I did not know that, so we want to thank them for that. Um, and at this time, um, if you'd like to say a few words, we would open the microphone up for you, sir.
Um, I would just like to say thank you. Um, I appreciate it. Um, I work with a lot of great people, and I'm glad that, um, that they've recognized me, and I'm just here to try to help and, um, help our, um, staff be prepared for the upcoming school year and during the testing, and, and hope that, uh, I help them help the children. And, um, because I've been here for 20 years, so now I have children of my own in the system, so thank you for all that you've done as well.
Well, thank you so much. Hold on just a minute, Mr. Tillman's going to give you your award.
Can I just say, kind and patient with technology is almost like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it even, so, God bless you.
Thank you. We would all like to shake your hand as well.
Kind and patient with us and your family.
All right, we are now at the public comments, uh, section of our agenda. Um, we have three speakers this evening. The first, uh, public speaker is Alice Franks, followed by John Moyle. Ms. Franks, as you're preaching, approaching the podium to preach, as you're approaching the, approaching the podium, I just want to remind you, as you introduce yourself, please say your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. When you have 15 seconds left, an amber light will show, and then you will have, a red light will, um, will show, and a buzzer will go off to let you know your time is up. So thank you very much for being here. If you can begin by saying your name.
Thank you. Dr. Alice Franks and I live at 4 Lee Wood Court, Greensboro 27410, though I formerly lived across the street from Mr. Tillman. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, Distinguished Board of Education members, and of course, Guilford County School staff. I've lived in Greensboro since 2005, and both of my daughters attended and graduated from Guilford County Schools. And I want to thank you for your service to the community and continued efforts to infuse equity and inclusion within the structure throughout all the structures and policies of the Guilford County Schools. I live in a society that reflects the identities I hold as a straight, white, middle-class, cis-female, Christian. My history's everywhere and generally reflected in a positive light, and that leg up has contributed to my confidence and success. I do have to say, though, that settings that have been inclusive of diverse range of identities has actually been a huge source of enrichment for me and growth. Shouldn't all children and families have the opportunities that I and my family have had? As a psychologist, I have witnessed the damaging effects of systemic inequities, and I implore you to take advantage of the upcoming search for a new superintendent to recommit to the principles of justice, equity, and inclusion. To continue to strengthen our schools and by extension, our entire community, I ask you to submit, to, to work on selecting a superintendent who meets some of these criteria, although this is not, um, not cover all the bases, but someone whose identities align with the goal of building a Guilford County School staff that mirrors the student identities within our community, that will always prioritize equal access to public education for all children, including the children's right to learn all of our history in settings that honor and reflect their identities. A superintendent that will make hard fiscal choices, including a willingness to divest from investments that don't align with the Guilford County School mission and values of equity and inclusion. A superintendent that will carry out the current facilities plan, committing to begin with repairs to poorly resourced schools first, and who will prioritize minority contractors in the process. A superintendent who helps level the playing field and close the achievement gaps truly will serve all of us in strengthening our community and making it a place where people will want to live. And so I thank you in advance for recommitting to this.
Thank you. Next, we have John Moyle, followed by our final speaker, Jack Harrington. Just a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments. If you'll begin with your name and address.
Yes, um, my name is John Moyle, and I live at 3901 Battleground here, apartment number 54 here in Greensboro. I, uh, I realize I'm about two meetings late here, but I did want to say to the board, and for the record, how much I appreciated the work that Dr. Contreras did while she was here as superintendent. Um, and I, and I feel like she created at least the beginning of a path toward an equitable education system for us. When you on the board are choosing the next superintendent, um, I, I think that it's important that you find somebody who can continue to move us down that path. The, the reason I say this is that those students who are in school right now are really going to face, once they get out of school, are going to face 30, or 40, or 50 years of very difficult times in this country. And I think we kind of know that, but nobody wants to admit it to themselves. But I'm going to say to you that it is essential that our school system learn how to treat all students equitably, so that every student can reach their full potential, because we are going to need every person that we can, that we can, that we can put out in order to address the issues that we're going to have to face. That's just a simple fact. Every student deserves an equitable education, and every student needs to be brought up to their full potential for all of us. So when you're looking for a superintendent, please look for someone who has actual experience in making progress in a school system with equitable education. In addition, I want to say one other thing. Somehow, and I don't, and I'm appreciative of the fact that, that, that the Guilford County School system hasn't fallen to this, but somehow it has become fashionable to try to protect our children from reality. I think that the whole idea of banning books, of trying to tell children that things are different than they were in history, and try to make believe that everything in this country is swell, I believe that that is un-American. I think if you're an American, you recognize that we have to deal with issues and we have to defeat them. So please look for someone who's willing to do that. You owe it to our children, and you owe it to us.
Thank you. And our final speaker again is Jack Harrington. And as you approach the podium, Mr. Harrington, just a reminder, to please begin with your name and address, that will not count against your time. You have three minutes to make your comments, and when the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jack Harrington. I live at 1602 Alderman Drive here in Greensboro. I've lived in Greensboro for nearly 50 years, and I believe fervently in public education. I have two children who were educated in the Guilford County Schools, and they were extraordinarily well-prepared for life's next stages. Over the last half-century, I have paid a bucket-load of taxes to support our schools, by fair share, I contend, and I don't begrudge a dime of that. I believe that great, lively, engaged, vibrant public schools are a social imperative and a public good, good for our children, good for all of our children, good for our teachers, for our administrators and staff. Public education that is honest, truthful, bold, innovative, and, uh, valiant is an immense societal good. It's good for families. It's good for our collective social, mental, and physical health. Public education is good for our business community, for recruiting employees, for attracting families to Guilford County, and for enhancing our communal quality of life. Furthermore, I believe that a literate and basically educated citizenry is the very lifeblood of our democracy. I yearn for teachers being entrusted to teach skills of critical thinking, being comfortable with the give and take of controversial ideas and literature. I yearn for teachers not just being allowed to teach more than the sanitized, dishonest history dished out to me in high school and beyond, but teachers who are encouraged to do so. I yearn for educational equity and perhaps even an increased tolerance for disproportionality, because children, whoever and wherever they are, who need greater resources should have the greater resources they need and not begrudgingly allocated. In your search for new leadership, I encourage you to search out that dear soul whose vision, resolve, and yearnings include these critical values. Thank you for your clarity and for your service.
Thank you. And that concludes our, um, public speaking portion of the meeting. We're now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the agenda.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Kim, did we get your aye? Thank you. Um, we are now at the consent agenda, and I will turn to, uh, Dr. Oakley.
Thanks. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the approval of the June meeting minutes, personnel report, the 2223 security and privacy liability insurance coverage, 2223 micro-purchase resolution, the 2122 budget amendments, and resolution for land lease for the GCS Community Education Center. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Um, all right, Diane? Pat? Linda?
Yes, to A, B, C, D, E, and now to F.
Winston?
Yes.
Betty? Deborah?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes, to A through E, now to F.
Okay, and Kim?
Yes, to all.
And Deana, yes. So A through E passes unanimously, and item F passes by a vote of seven to two. Uh, we are now at reports from the chair, and I have a few things here. Good evening and welcome. I will start by offering my condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of our beloved Dr. Nora Carr, former Guilford County Schools Chief of Staff and so much more, who passed away unexpectedly at the end of June. Nora was a powerful voice for children and a tireless advocate for public education. She made a lasting impact on every person she encountered, and she was a mentor to many school and district leaders across the state and nation. Nora was a special person, and she will be greatly missed. The board will properly honor her memory with a resolution at an upcoming meeting. Summer meal distribution continues at 22 school locations and several community sites, a map of which can be found on our website. These meals are for any child under the age of 18 and must be consumed on-site. They are available Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 9:00, and from 11:00 to noon. Now is the time to fill out application, the, fill out the application for free meals for the 2022-2023 school year. As a reminder, the federal waivers that allow districts to serve meals to all students for free have now expired, so it is important that every family fill out the application to qualify for meal benefits next year. Filling out the application also helps provide the district with information that can be used to obtain funding that will support students in other ways. Visit lunchapplication.com and complete the steps. The application is available in English and in Spanish. Please note that the deadline to request transportation for the upcoming school year has been extended to July 19th. You can find the transportation request form under the quick links section of our website at www.gcsnc.com. And finally, we will be working with the Guilford County Board of Commissioners to continue the work of the Joint Facilities Committee. We are finalizing the written guidelines. This concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, as an educator, a parent, and a longtime resident of Guilford County, it's an honor to serve our schools and our community as Acting Superintendent. I am thankful to Dr. Contreras for her remarkable contributions to our county for nearly six years. She worked tirelessly to improve learning and life outcomes for all children in our community. I'm also grateful to each board member for their support in granting me the opportunity to serve this great district until a new superintendent is named. After seeing the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our children and families, I am convinced that this is the most consequential decade in public education. It is my hope that we can all work together as educational leaders, parents, teachers, and community members to ensure that we continue providing a high-quality education to all Guilford County students. I believe we can serve as a model for North Carolina and the rest of the country for what is possible post-pandemic, when we put our children and their future first. I share Chairperson Hayes-Green's sympathy for the family of Dr. Carr. She was an extraordinary leader in public education who dedicated 13 years of service to Guilford County Schools. To me, she was a mentor, colleague, and most importantly, friend. The entire GCS family mourns her loss, and our condolences go out to her husband Kevin and their children Casey, Aaron, and Tara. The summer reading challenge is in full swing. Those who read at least 900 minutes and submit their reading logs will earn a free ticket from Kersey Valley for either the Corn Maze or Spooky Woods activities. I want to see Kersey Valley filled with GCS students this fall. Any reading material counts towards your minutes. Remember that GCS students can access nearly 14,000 eBooks, audiobooks, and interactive books on the GCS ebookshelf. Visit our website at www.gcsnc.com for more details. Students who will be in pre-K, kindergarten, 7th grade, or 12th grade next year are required by law to receive certain vaccinations, along with any student who will be enrolled in a North Carolina public school for the first time. These can be received through your healthcare provider or through the Department of Public Health. Health assessments and immunizations will be available for free to those who do not have health insurance. Please call 336-641-6720 to learn more and schedule an appointment. Finally, our elementary school supply list is now available. The list is posted under the quick links section of the website at gcsnc.com and is available in multiple languages. Please note that the list is only for elementary schools. Middle and high school lists will be based on student-specific classes. This concludes my remarks, and I'll now call on Ms. Henry for the 2223 budget update.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. Good evening. Um, today we'll be sharing, this evening, we'll be sharing an update. And, uh, Dr. Fundaburk is distributing a copy of the PowerPoint, um, right now. We are in a good place with our budget, better than we have been in lots and lots and lots of years. Yesterday was my birthday, and I felt like the governor gave me a present by signing, signing the budget bill, um, in July. Right? It's, it's, uh, it's great. So just, uh, but we're not ready to bring you a final budget resolution for 2223, but I do want to share an update with you, um, so you kind of know where we stand and what was included, um, in this, the state budget that did get, um, signed yesterday. First, though, we want to look at what was approved by the Board of County Commissioners for, um, funding for Guilford County Schools. Oops, the, sorry. Uh, the 2223 appropriation for, um, our operating budget is $244,810,398. That's a night That's a $19,200,000 increase over last year, or an 8.5% increase over last year. So that was very good news that lots, most of what the board requested in funding was approved by the county commissioners. When we look at what was included, and this is the information that was included in the manager's budget recommendation and along with the additions that were made during their budget meeting on the 16th, there is $10 million of that $19.2 million is to be directed toward increasing the local teacher supplement. We will be bringing it later in an action item, a request to approve that we go ahead and move forward with adding that funding to our interim budget resolution, along with the $2 million increase in funding that's to be directed to principal supplement and the $1.2 million increase that we received to be applied to the assistant principal supplement. There are also included in that $19.2 million the increase in funding for charter schools that were required to pay for students that attend charter schools that are from Guilford County. And then also included in the $19.2 million were the dollars for our locally funded staff, the salary increases that at the time we had projected based on what we anticipated being in the state budget. That's a little different now, but they did fund what we had anticipated. So that's all that's included in the $19.2 million that we received in additional funding from the county. When we look at what was appropriated for capital outlay, our annual capital maintenance, you know, we have had that historically be between the $3 to $6 million range. This year, it is $10 million, which is a 67% increase over our 2122 year, funding of $6 million. So of the $10 million, $2 million is lottery funds. So we will be bringing you an application to approve when we identify the specific project that those dollars will be used for. Now, we're going to move just to the state budget that again was signed yesterday. I think it's important to note, first of all, that the ADM Hold Harmless has gone away. There is no more ADM Hold Harmless for the 2223 year. So adjustments will be made based on our enrollment on the best of the first two months. So either their enrollment on the 20th day or the 40th day of school, our allotments will be adjusted for those. So when we look at what was done for teacher compensation, the teacher supplement allotment that we talked about last year, the $100 million that was approved for all counties except five, was increased in the 2223 budget to $170 million. And it's been allotted to counties with an adjusted market value of taxable real property of less than $43,700 million, which sounds very specific and was very intentional because now there are only four counties that won't qualify. Guilford County is still one of the four, but they got another county in. I don't know yet, but we'll find that out. I suspect it's the one furthest west, but we'll find out later. I just know that when I asked the question today, I was told that there was one that was eligible this year that wasn't last year. So when we look at the teacher salary, the increase there, you'll see the beginning teacher, their state salary is now going to be $37,000. All other teachers are going to get a step increase, which ranges from 2.5% to 7.2%, depending on their years of experience and where they're moving to on the salary schedule. So the range of increase, including the step and the salary increase, is going to be from $1,320 to $3,350 annually for a 10-month employment. Our psychologists, SLP, audiologists, OTs, and PTs are going to continue to receive the additional $350 a month supplement that they've received in 2122. And our counselors will continue to receive the $100 per month supplement that they received in 2122. Bonuses are going to look very different this year than they did last year. We're going back to having the performance bonuses for our teachers in grades three through eight for math and reading. These bonuses will be based on the 2122, or these past spring's test results, and these bonuses will not be subject to retirement. The teachers will also receive the AP, IB, and CTE state-funded, or the bonuses based on the 2122 results in those areas as well. And again, those won't be subject to the retirement system. For our school administrators, our assistant principals, their salaries will continue to flow through the teacher salary schedule. So it'll remain at the A schedule plus 19%, but we just talked about how that schedule's increasing across the board. And then for principals, while it's our principal, well, these increases have already been included in the salary calculations that we've shared with our principals for the 2223 year. There is a salary, a scheduled increase of 4%. Their state salary will be determined based on, their July through December salary will be based on the ADM for 2122 plus growth for three, best three years. It includes 2018, 19. Their state salary will change in June or in January based on the 2223 ADM and then growth for 2122. Again, that won't impact our principals because we've already taken that into consideration in the salary calculations that we've shared with our principals. Our principals will qualify this year for performance-based bonuses from the state, and those are going to be based on the 2122 results, and those will not be subject to retirement. For our classified staff, our non-certified staff are going to receive an increase on their annual salary of the greater of 4% or to get their hourly compensation to a minimum of $15 per hour. So all of our staff, once we implement this, will be at a minimum of $15 an hour. Central office staff will receive a 4% increase. This is where you see some of the difference in what we projected and what the state passed. So the county funded us, so what we projected was about a 2.5% increase. So this will be a little higher than that for our non-certified and classified staff. The retirement rate that was included in the budget bill is 24.5%. We had planned on 24.19%, so it is a little higher than we had planned. And then you can see the increase from the 2122 actual from 22.89%. So we're still seeing significant increases in the retirement rate, which makes, you know, the cost of employees higher. Our health rate did increase to the amount that we anticipated of $7,397 annually for each FTE. Other things that are in the budget, there are additional funds to reflect the actual average salaries of school resource officers to each funded high school. I don't recall the last time that we had an increase in that average salary for our school resource officers. It's been, I don't remember it, so it's been that long. And then there are non-recurring funds for the 2223 school year to provide school lunches at no cost to students who qualify for the reduced-price meal for all schools that are participating in the National School Lunch Program. Those are the items in the budget bill that impact us financially. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anita?
Could you explain the non-recurring funds for school lunches? Explain that to me in layman's terms?
Sure. So for this budget year only, for 2223, they've appropriated funds to reimburse school nutrition programs for the reduced costs, the reduced-price meal cost for any student that qualifies for reduced meals. So anybody that qualifies for reduced meals will receive free meals, and the state's going to pick up that addition, that cost, and reimburse school districts for that cost.
Is that breakfast and lunch?
It is breakfast and lunch.
So there, for a lot of children, that'll mean no change for the coming school year, is that correct?
It's for any, yeah, any student that would qualify for reduced-price meals. We don't have as many of those as we do that qualify for the free meals, but certainly it'll increase that number.
Okay, thank you.
Winston, then Deborah?
Just on the ADM Hold Harmless, how long have we had that? And can you say something about the estimated number of positions? That'll impact?
Sure.
Because as I understand that, right, it's that at some point, we started losing students in the pandemic, but they didn't adjust our positions, and now they're going to make that adjustment. So schools that have been operating with a certain number of staff, they might have only lost a half dozen or a dozen kids, but now that
They're going to see the impact.
Require a position.
Right, right. So it's been for two years for the 2120, I mean, for the 2021 fiscal year and the 2122 fiscal year. What happened is the state allotted us positions based on projected enrollment.
And that was like in the spring of 2019, then?
It would have been in the spring of 2020 that they would have
Okay, 2020, right, okay.
Probably was August or September, or maybe December of 2020 when we really got the final budget, but
Right, because of the pandemic.
So they allotted us based on our projected enrollment. And then when they normally would have made an adjustment for that at the 20th day or 40th day, based on that enrollment, they didn't. So for schools that may not have had the number of students enrolled that we projected or that we anticipated, so we had allotted teachers to those schools, they may not have had those teachers taken out of those schools when the students didn't show up.
And that's for the 2020, 21, and this year, this past year? So we've had two years?
Yes.
So given the drop in enrollment, do you have an estimated number of teaching positions that?
I did not bring it with me. I know I shared it. Let me see if I can get it real quick. But I feel like it was over 70 teacher, between 57 and 70, for some reason. That's
And are those primarily at the elementary school level? I would assume that's where we saw the greater drops in enrollment, but I don't
Yeah, I don't know exactly where those
Just because of kindergarten numbers and what we saw in terms of enrollment numbers?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that creates a hardship on staff because you've just been operating with a certain number of teachers in the building, and now all kinds of adjustments are having to be made, right? So we're anticipating those, or those will come later?
We anticipated those as we made the allotments to schools for the 2223 school year. And that's why we tried to include that in our budget, in the superintendent's budget message, early in, I think it was in April that we did that, just so you would be aware. Because we knew principals were probably feeling it and seeing it when they looked at their allocations versus what they currently had in their buildings. So we wanted to be sure that everybody was aware of why that was happening. It wasn't because we had seen a decrease, and it wasn't a change in our allotment formula. We didn't change any formulas. It was just that we had not had to make adjustments down.
And if enrollment goes up, do they only adjust that Angie on the 20th or 40th day, and then it's next year? Like if we find it mid-year? Because we have to accept students all year, regardless of our teacher allotment, right? I mean, we get 20 kids who show up at a school and enroll. We have to accept them.
Right, yeah.
If they live in that district. But you don't necessarily get additional teachers for that, do we?
That's correct. We don't, we don't. Once they make that one adjustment, there's no additional teachers.
Until the next school year?
Now, that doesn't mean that we don't, if, you know, if we bump into class size issues in our schools, you know, we've got those K3 class size limits.
Right.
We've got to, we've got to assign a teacher.
We have to find a teacher, even though we don't get one from the state.
Exactly, exactly. I'm sorry, I was really underestimating the number of teacher allocations. It looks like we are going to have a difference of, no, that's right, 64 teachers.
Okay. And does it impact any other allotments too? Counselors or bus drivers or?
So they don't really address transportation. There are several categories that they do address for 20th or for lower enrollment. It is teachers, it is some non-instructional support, it is instructional support where there are counselors and social workers, and it's instructional supplies. There are certain categories that they adjust based, because those allotments are based just on ADM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah, then Diane.
Let's see, I was going to ask, I think it's page nine, if you guys want to flip to it, totally up to you. The step and increase ranges that we use at Guilford County, are those set by the state? Do the individual districts do not set their own? So we have to follow the state numbers? Because I was looking at it a while back when we had the initial budget talk, and, you know, we're looking at going sometimes 10, 12, 15 years before step increases happen, which, you know, of course, we want our employees to stay that long, but the reality is the longer they have to wait for the step increase, the less likely they are to stay for that step increase. So those are set by the state of North Carolina.
So yes, the state of North Carolina defines the state teacher salary schedule, and we have to pay all of our teachers on that unless we have, unless the board approves a different salary schedule for our locally or federally funded teachers. So there are, there is growth in the salary schedule up until, I think, you get to 15 years of experience, and then I think you're fairly flat till you get to 25 years, and then you get a bump, and then it's the same for the rest of your career.
It used to be 30. So they, the steps used to go to 30, and that was one of the most drastic changes to the salary schedule when they stopped, including increases through year 30. We had a significant drop in people because more people retired, they weren't getting any increases.
Well, sure. If you're going to work that long, you want to get paid for it.
And what we're seeing now is while the steps are remaining, I mean, 15's going to get, the 15's going to get paid the same as the 16, it's the same as the 17, but all three of the, I mean, all of those are going up when they're applying some increase. It's not a lot of an increase, but there is some increase in those years. So they're all getting something. And we have tried historically to address some of that with the supplement schedule, but we're flattening that out now as we move forward so that that allows us to pay the same supplement across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Diane, then Betty, then Anita.
On page six, you, okay, I think that's the $10,000 for capital, right?
The $10 million, yes.
Yeah, 10, excuse me, $10 million. How much of that have we spent already?
Oh, we haven't spent any yet. We haven't approved, we haven't assigned that to projects yet. We did an interim budget, so that interim budget is based on last year's $6 million, so.
Isn't this going to go to repair H, oh, air conditioning systems and things like that?
Yep, we included what we had anticipated spending it on. It's HVAC. Let me get there. Safety and security, some field light poles, because we've got some dangerous situations, or some potentially dangerous situations. Some reaving projects, some system-wide site work, and some system-wide finishes. That's what we included in our request for the $10 million.
Okay, on page 10. Okay, you said, I think, is that the bonuses will be performance-based, right? Okay. The fact that we were impacted by the pandemic and closed down, then the scores for this school year we just finished won't necessarily be that great, right?
Well, we're hopeful. I mean, and they assign these, calculate these bonuses, my memory is, and Dr. Morrison can correct me if I'm wrong, but they do it as a comparison across the state. It's not you have to reach a certain level. It's based on how others perform as well. So it's the top performers across the state who receive the bonuses. So, I mean, if we're down, if we're down, you would anticipate everybody across the state being down so that we would still be, you know, our teachers would still compare favorably.
And then on page 13. I'm pleased if we're going to get all classified employees to $15 an hour, but will this be based on them just, that will be the salary? Or will they have to do certain things to get the $15 an hour?
No, it will be the salary. It will be a minimum of $15 an hour. And I didn't include on here and failed to mention that that includes substitutes as well.
Substitute?
Teachers.
Okay, so we
Or anybody, or any substitute coming in for any position.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make sure that, because what I heard was that when we were trying to get to $15 an hour, that we were requiring certain people to have to jump through certain hoops in order to get there. Additional than just you are hired and you get the $15 an hour?
I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of any hoop that it has to be jumped through, other than just being a permanent employee, qualifying to be a permanent employee.
Oh, okay, but like temporary employees wouldn't necessarily get $15 an hour?
Well, if they're in a, if they're in a substitute, I think they have to, yeah. I mean, that specifically says, and I can find it in here, that the substitute, substitutes are included in the $15 an hour. There's a rate for substitutes, but they have to be at least fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, but weren't we already paying ourselves, you're talking about substitute teachers?
No, substitute anything. Substitute bus driver, substitute cafeteria staff, substitute anything, or teacher, teacher assistant, any, any substitute.
But our substitute teachers are making more than that already, aren't they?
I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Does, does Dr. Morrison know?
The rate that substitutes, the rate it would be higher than fifteen dollars an hour, the teachers, but she's saying everyone else will never.
Okay, all right. So I just want, because we don't want our substitute teachers all of a sudden to think that they're dropping down. Because I thought they were being paid a higher rate than fifteen dollars an hour. So they are, right?
Their rate will stay, their, their rate will stay at, if they're a certified substitute teacher, their rate will stay at the beginning, the one day rate for an A zero teacher. Isn't that what it is at least? So yes, that their rate, it'll increase, their rate will increase based on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, then Anita, then Pat.
Hey, page five, you mentioned about the charter schools. How much are we paying per pupil, for charter kids?
This year was twenty eight hundred. Next year will be higher because we are getting nineteen point two million more dollars from the county. And we'll have to divide that over the total number of students. And so I anticipate it being higher if our enrollment stays the same and the charter school enrollment increases by what we're projecting. That's what makes up a lot of the two million dollars increase in our charter school funding. It's, it's that we have to fund new students, but we also have increased funding for the nine thousand students that are already, that we're already paying for.
Thank you. Anita, then Pat.
The starting teacher pay will be thirty seven. Is that correct?
That's the state salary. That doesn't include the local supplement.
Include the local, okay. So a sub would be, a teacher sub would be the two combined. Is that correct?
No, I think we just use the state salary, don't we? We just use the state salary.
Okay, so on the state salary only. And the other question I had is twenty days or forty days at ADM?
The best of the two.
Best of the two, okay. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you. I, I usually download, I know last meeting, we did have outlined the priorities for that, the ask from the county commissioners. Now that we've got that, could I get that again? I'm just sort of asking that as a general question. I couldn't, I wasn't able to pull it up, but I thought you had highlighted those priorities that we did last meeting as a, as part of the, where that additional increase that made up the ten million?
Oh, you're asking for the capital.
Right, totally correct, on page six.
Okay.
I, I mean, it was HVAC, it was safety, security.
Field light poles.
Right.
You want me to send it to you?
Can, can you do that? Yeah, I couldn't pull it. I was looking for it. I must have buried it in my desktop.
Just, just for everybody's information, we'll send it out to everybody, but it is HVAC, safety and security, field light poles, roofing projects, system-wide site work and system-wide finishes.
Yeah, and can you tell me the number on the roofing projects?
One million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, because there was a long list of schools.
Yeah, part, most of them were partial.
Improvements, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll just wait for that.
Okay.
And, and I know it was, I have it, I just couldn't find it. On page eight for our daily membership, and for my benefit, is that the, how does that work with charter schools? Is it completely different or is it the same formula?
No, charter schools get a per pupil formula based on the funding for the district that the student's coming from. So if a student's coming from Guilford County, they'll take our ADM, our, our per pupil amount, they make a calculation. And then that's what they give the charter schools. I don't know how they adjust it for best one of two. I suspect they do, but I haven't, I've never, I don't remember asking that question before. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's how they do it, so. They, I'm sorry, NCDPI.
Okay, yeah, that was my follow-up, okay. And going back a little bit, sort of riffing off what Winston was asking in terms of projections and spinning it forward. Because how, how long were we held harmless?
Two years, two fiscal years.
So we've got empirical data that shows where we didn't have the, the stay, if you will, in the past.
Let me go, let me go back up there. So we know how many students we were allocated based on projections or how many students were included in the formulas when they calculated. And then we know how many students were the best of our best one of two. So for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, they allotted us seventy-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one students. Our best of the first two months was sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. For that difference is right at three thousand students, right? For twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, they allotted us based on seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty students. Our best of the first two months was sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight, again, right at a three thousand student difference. So the number of classroom teachers that were allotted based on those allotted numbers were not adjusted down to, for the three thousand student difference.
Right. In terms of schools that have more transient populations, you know, where they're, after January, bam, you know, you see students showing up. I mean, there's no real formula for that.
Well, there has to be for the grades K through three, because we have to keep, we have the state mandated class size mandates that our class sizes can't exceed a certain amount. And the superintendent has to certify that at least twice a year to say that we're within class size in, in every classroom for grades K through three and the average across the district. So we have to, we, we have to, the state doesn't fund it, but we have to provide teachers to those schools and where the class size is, is increased in those grade levels.
So if you, how often does that happen?
Quite frequently, just like you said, we have a lot of movement and there are certain times of the year.
Apartments, you know, because they've had, they've been able to stay there or something and now their mom and dad have to move or family.
Yeah, but quite, quite frequently we have to, we have to do it. We first look to see if there's a waiver and we, we sometimes bring waivers to the board to see if, if, if there's some reason, if, if we, if the school qualifies for one of those few reasons for the waivers. But if they don't, we have to assign a teacher.
So if you had a big uptick, for example, you'd have to add a classroom, a teacher, teachers.
It could be a classroom, but what we may, sometimes because we don't have space, we have to put all the students in one classroom and add a teacher to the classroom and have two teachers in a single classroom.
Right.
That's not ideal, but sometimes that's what we have to do.
Well, I was, you know, I'm not going to get into the nuances, but I, I was delighted to see, I really am a big fan of bonuses, you know, performance bonuses. Because you really, I think you get the best value for your dollar when you've, you know, it's based on, on performance. So I was, I was happy to see that. One last question. This is, maybe Jill, you might can answer it since you were, had mentioned the step increases. Was that back in oh eight, oh nine when the Great Recession happened and, you know, like teacher pay was frozen and, and the step increases kind of?
I can't give you the exact time, but it had more to do with the way the retirement accounts were performing and the need to, or the perceived need by the legislature to make sure the retirement system was protected in their view. And so they also wanted to encourage people to retire earlier and not get to thirty years because the benefits significantly increase if you get thirty years in the state system. So it was my view and the perception of many that the intent was to get people to retire before they got to thirty years. So they wouldn't be able to access as much in the retirement system.
When they did it, and I don't remember the timeframe either, but they flattened out, because, I mean, steps zero to five were the same. I mean, zero to four were the same.
Twenty-five thousand dollars when their initial pay for starting teachers.
I think it was thirty-five. I don't think it was twenty-five.
I think it was twenty-five.
But, so, and so now they're recovering from some of that, where they're just, they're differentiating between steps zero to fif, to fifteen. But then when you get to fifteen, you're kind of stagnant. Oh, wow, okay.
My last question is page six. I, I knew I was forgetting something. The two million in, in lottery funds, so I know we've gone round and round on this. So in terms of getting the money and then applying it where we want to versus paying down debt, this two million, so is that just our normal piece of the pie?
No, it's a norm, so this is an accumulation of, you know, like you mentioned, they have, the county has used lottery funds for debt service for, I think, back since two thousand and eight. And they've applied for a specific amount for, I think it's four million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars every year. So the lottery funding fluctuates. I mean, it's capped at a hundred million across the state, but it, it fluctuates every year. So some years we get, well, I guess every year we get a little bit more than the four point eight seven five million that they request. So over the years it is accumulated and they have two million dollars now that is accumulated that it's greater than the four point eight seven five million that they'll request. And so that's why they've used those dollars to help fund this ten million dollars.
But they will, the commissioners will continue to make that decision. We won't have any.
Well, this board has to approve that application every year, so.
Right. So that's when we, I mean, just looking ahead, okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you, Deborah.
One last one, real quick, going back to the subpay. I know that this came out of our ESSR dollars, but how long did we approve the bonuses for substitutes based on attendance? Do you remember? We had a program going there for a while that if they worked every day, I want to say for a month, they got an extra thousand dollar bonus. I can't remember when that expired, though.
I know we did it through this year, the, yeah, we didn't, I didn't think we set an expiration date.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Henry. We are now at update on Guilford County Schools Mental Health Services.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson will come up to provide this presentation. Just a reminder to the board, two things. Mental health was a subset of that longer transition report at the last meeting. It's expansive, it's in-depth. So again, I think we're scratching the surface here just to provide a little bit. And it's specific to students. This report is specific to students. I think we can schedule a time to talk about what the state health plan and what the district is doing for staff mental health. But wanted to be upfront that this is a report specific to student mental health services, the three tiers that go along with that. There will be some general data provided within this report, but because of where we are in the school year and the transition to the next year, not every piece of data is verified yet. And so we won't be able to share granular levels until that data is shared. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Robinson.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Madam Superintendent and distinguished Guilford County School Board members. Good to see you all again. Hope you had a great Fourth of July. As you may recall, during my last update to the board on GCS Mental Health Services on Tuesday, June twenty eighth, I provided you with a series of high-level updates from the Department of Student Services addressing the national student mental health crisis, student attendance, discipline reporting, and the district's current work in compliance with North Carolina's policy for school-based mental health. Tonight, I want to provide you with another high-level overview to the initial report following, focusing exclusively on the district's current and planned mental health services for all students. Highlighting national trend data, our framework to comprehensively address student mental health challenges, current programming and training activities, and next steps for academic year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. My only caveat, as Dr. Oakley mentioned, is that we don't have a whole lot of specific data that has not yet been verified, but we will provide. As I stated at our last report, the issue of student mental health has never been more pressing or central to keeping our schools safe and ensuring that we graduate students who are prepared to be successful citizens and leaders in the world. According to data from the National Survey of Children's Health, the number of children ages three to seventeen years diagnosed with anxiety grew by twenty-nine percent and those with depression by twenty-seven percent between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. And between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, there was a twenty-one percent in children diagnosed with behavioral or conduct issues. Now, while we know that the rise in student mental health issues was not caused by the pandemic, all the data suggests that the pandemic only exacerbated an already growing crisis in youth mental health, and this situation has only gotten worse. As shown here, these factors have included an estimated one hundred and seventy-five thousand children who lost a parent or caregiver giving, according to the CDC. And the daunting reality that students of color have disproportionately been affected by those losses because of longstanding societal inequities resulting in higher death rates in these communities. For example, last year, a CDC study showed that compared to white children, Asian children were four point five times as likely to have a lost parent or caregiver due to COVID nineteen. Black children were two point four times as likely and Hispanic children were twice as likely. Also numerous reports have also shown that evidence of youth manifesting emotions more aggressively and violently in schools is also on the rise across the nation. And here we see that just last year, more than seventy-seven thousand physicians in more than two hundred children's hospitals declared a national state emergency in child and adolescent mental health, showing a forty-five percent increase in the number of self-injury and suicide cases for children between the ages of five and seventeen compared to the same period in twenty nineteen. And while the immediate effects of school shootings are devastating, long-term detrimental effects on the mental health and educational outcomes of surviving students and their families cannot be underestimated. For example, in one study analyzing the impacts of forty-four U.S. school shootings between two thousand and eight and twenty thirteen, showed that average monthly number of anti-depressant prescriptions written for youth under the age of twenty by providers located near schools that experienced a fatal shooting was twenty-one point three percentage points higher relative to other providers. And you may have seen this data from our colleague, Mr. Mike Ritchie, during a security update. But it shows the significant increase in the number of instances where a gun has been brandished, fired, or a bullet has hit school property for any reason since nineteen seventy. And this year, we learned for the first time gun violence is the leading cause of death among children in America, showing a thirty percent jump in fatalities for children between the ages of one and nineteen in twenty twenty. So in accordance with North Carolina's school-based mental health policy, requiring the district to adopt and implement a mental health training and suicide referral protocol, GCS is responding to address the most prevalent mental health challenges our students face, including substance use, emotional crisis, stress through prevention, early intervention, instruction, data evaluation, treatment, and referral collaboration. As you're aware, Guilford County Schools submitted a district improvement plan for school mental health on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one with a goal of universal promotion and mental and social emotional wellness prevention through core instruction, curriculum, and promoting a positive school climate. And to establish a foundation for student and staff wellness through a cross-functional team approach, the district is deploying multiple levels or tiers of support as a framework to benefit all students. Here is important to note that at tier one level, we deploy universal supports available to all students that can be delivered at the school, grade, or classroom level. The tier one mental health supports could include social and emotional competency development and student-teacher relationship mapping to ensure that every student can identify at least one trusted adult in the school. Tier one aligned activities include our Parents and Teachers as Allies Training, a series that helps parents and other family caregivers to better understand the challenges of mental health and its impact. health and its impact on youth. Our Sandy Hook Promise Say Something and Start With Hello training that teaches teachers, that teaches students, I'm sorry, teachers and students how to recognize the signs and signals of individuals that may pose a school threat and how to inform, again, a trusting adult at the school level. And Start With Hello teaches students how to connect with other students to avoid or limit social isolation. Also, our Trauma-Informed Care Training that introduces teachers to the concepts of trauma-informed care and effective implementation in an educational setting. And our Youth Mental Health First Aid, which teaches, which teaches school employees how to identify, understand, and respond to the signs and symptoms of youth mental illness and substance use disorders. Other aligned activities include our MTSS Training, which informs participants about the multi-tier systems of support or framework for providing targeted supports to struggling students with a goal of addressing academic and behavioral challenges as early as possible so students can catch up with their peers. Also, Ending the Silence Training, that teaches participants about the signs and symptoms of mental health conditions, as well as how to recognize the early warning signs and the importance of acknowledging and recognizing them. And our Mental Health Toolkit, a resource designed for school administrators, counselors, and social workers to explain the three tiers of mental health support that include prevention, that enclose promotion, prevention, and intervention for students. Our Trauma-Informed Care Training, which introduces concepts and implementation set for trauma-informed care in the educational setting. And our Youth Mental Health First Aid Training, which teaches school employees how to identify, understand, and respond to the signs. Tier two includes for specific, tier two includes supports for specific, for specific students who have been identified as needing additional resources and opportunities to promote mental health and well-being. These services are frequently, but not always, delivered in small groups, licensed instruction and practice with social emotional skills such as self-regulation or relationship skills, increased opportunities for positive reinforcement, and increased adult supervision. Some of our tier-two aligned activities include our district-level training as GCS families in collaboration with GPA, to help families stay psychologically and emotionally healthy by recognizing, understanding, and responding to addictions and mental illness. And our Grad Fest Mini Grants that support drug-free graduation celebrations each year to qualifying schools. Also, our Suicide Intervention Training for Staff, which is an online mandatory vector training that teaches participants how to help those who are suicidal. Our Student Drug and Alcohol Abuse Training, also an online training that provides an overview of student substance abuse and educators' roles in substance use prevention. And our Student Mental Health Awareness Training, an online mandatory training that provides an overview of student mental health concerns and responsibilities for educators. We have a lot of trainings, to say the least. And here we see we have some of the topics: bullying, recognition and response, cyberbullying, dating violence, prescription jug and opioid abuse. And last year, we saw that sixty-five hundred GCS employees participated in these mandatory Tier three supports include intensive supports for students experiencing significant distress or diagnosable mental challenges. These supports are often individualized and may include specialized supports through wraparound services, a formal functional-based assessment to understand why a student is struggling, and individualized extrinsic reward systems. Just a few of our tier-three aligned supports include our targeted school-based mental health services. Here, direct mental health services are available in thirteen of our Title I schools. Licensed therapists from partner agencies who have been vetted by GCS for their ability to support our students' intensive mental health needs provide these services. And GCS offers three-day treatment programs to EC students who have been identified as needing intensive mental health support, including Building Futures, Mel Burton, and Tier three also is where we pay attention to students who demonstrate a need for behavioral and/or mental health services, which includes students with disabilities. Students with disabilities are served in various ways to address their behavior or mental health needs as they progress through the tiered process. The EC department actually facilitates the provision of regional behavior support classes at five elementary schools. And as determined by the IEP team, EC students on future-ready standards receive instruction and behavioral mental health support in small settings. The EC Behavioral Support System provides direct district-wide assistance to classroom teachers by coaching and modeling appropriate behavior, management strategies for students, and other crisis assistance also offer students in crisis situations temporary one-on-one support, which is often manifested through physical and mental health-related behaviors. Very quickly, just a few of our additional tier-three support activities include our Crisis Intervention Teams, which aims to support a school in dealing with a Level One, Level Two, and Level Three crises. At the request of a school, the District Crisis Response Team provides the following services: provides a sense of confidence, control, and security at a time of uncertainty, provides a process for helping students and staff cope with emotionally charging issues, and determines the needs of students, staff, and community. This also includes our Crisis Hotline, established in March twenty-six, twenty twenty at the start of the pandemic, to assist students and their families with resources such as food, mental health support, academic support, technology needs, and other requests to support students remaining attached to their schools. Last but not least is our Tobacco Education Program, which is provided, who provided to students who violate Student Code of Conduct Rule Five, whose parents request that they attend the program because of concern about their students' use of tobacco. You guys are familiar with our ASAP program, a lifestyles program, and finally, our Telehealth Program that aims to help students avoid missing class and then receiving expensive emergency department fees. Here, studies have shown that learning suffers when students are not in class. And of the three hundred patients seen at the Bessemer Elementary Clinic since it opened, two hundred and forty returned to class without having to go see outside help. Next steps align to our three-tier levels. Number one, we want to implement the School Health Assessment and Performance Evaluation System, known as SHAPE, a public access web-based platform that provides a workspace and targeted resources to schools, districts, and states to support school mental health quality improvement. Number two is to increase the scope and participation of district-level training, increase the availability of universal mental health, social, and behavioral health, and to disseminate and train all school principals and assistant principals on effective mental health supports for students using Mental Health Toolkit during this summer's Summer Leadership Institute. Under our tier-two next steps, we hope to establish a plan and protocol for universal and equitable mental health screenings, establish and support school mental health teams in all schools. And under number three, we hope to coordinate mental health supports in schools, create school-based mental health teams in all learning environments, and improve and expand on all crisis and intervention programming and family resources. I'm available for questions.
Deborah? I know you saw that one coming. All right, first up, page eighteen, the Grad Fest Mini Grants. Is this something we've already done, or is this something we're putting in place to do? Drug-free graduation celebrations, have we?
Yes, we have done this. Yeah, and we've done it at a number of schools.
Okay. I would like to suggest that we maybe make that a little bit more public, because I don't remember it like being announced during, may have missed it. Am I going to tell you I'm perfect? But maybe embellish that a little bit. Let's see. On page twenty-two, the School-Based Mental Health Services, it says that we have in thirteen of our Title I schools, direct mental health services available. And while I don't disagree that those resources are needed, the demographic of your typical school shooter does not usually match the demographic of a Title I school. So how far can we expand those services out?
Yes, ma'am. That is underway now. When I learned of this myself, I realized that, hey, I think all schools really need the support, and so that's what we're looking to do now to scale that.
Okay, because, yeah, we definitely need to reach the targets.
I would just point out that with the ESAR dollars related to mental health, they all sunset in 2024, and so hiring a bunch of people for a very short period of time isn't gonna get us to where we need to be. So I think we have to think more around the connections with community agencies and doing that in a more strategic way, because you're right, there's kids with mental health crises at every school demographic. But I'm not sure that it's realistic for us to think that we're going to be able to have a person at each of our schools. I think in an earlier presentation, we also talked about, and you know this, the provider shortage.
That steps can be.
Right? And so I think the average provider has, you know, like a waitlist of, you know, they, we just can't.
Right now, Guilford County's at four to six months for a licensed professional counselor, not even someone at the practicing doctor level.
Right. So I think the only way we're going to be able to really move is to better coordinate these, these services within the community. I don't think these will go away, but they're, they're funded in a way that's sustainable. We can't just do positions with ESAR and expect it to last.
I see. So the Title I is with the Title I.
Correct.
The rank order. Okay, gotcha. So that may be something that we might put forward to the Legislative Committee, is something sustainable from state dollars.
Perhaps.
Fair. With the, on page twenty-six, the ASAP program, how do we go about determining substance abuse? Because it's not like we can drug screen our students. We're not going to do that. So are we looking at students who voluntarily say, I have a problem with XYZ? Do we look at other student reports? How do we identify students that are targeted for something like the ASAP program?
Sure. So this program is specifically designed for students who actually broke, break the Student Code of Conduct Rule Twenty-four.
Okay. So I'd have to go back and look at that one to know the exact parameters. I don't remember off the top of my head. You know, there's also the pole caught red-handed thing. And then I, the last one, and this is to address what I assume would be a future presentation, is, you know, we have mentioned in here extensive training for our staff about meeting these students where they are, having a trusted adult for them, and that is fantastic because a lot of the times, you know, the parent is the last one a student wants to talk to. You know, for he's a teenager, I've been there, and that's okay. The flip side to that is we have to be able to support our staff as they go through basically what is a secondhand trauma with these students, sometimes very, very close firsthand experience. So when, or do you have a presentation in the pipeline on what support programs we're putting in, in place for our staff?
I think that's probably more appropriate for a work session. I think we have a couple coming up on the calendar. The state health plan has also expanded their reach a little bit, so I think delving into both that and what's happening internally is probably more appropriate for a work session.
That's fine. I didn't expect a direct answer right now, because like you said, this is student-specific, and I recognize that, but that's just something I wanted to put on the radar to keep an eye on. We got to take care of our staff if they're going to take care of our kids. And I know y'all, y'all agree with that.
Thank you.
London? I'm sorry, Pat, Diane, then London.
Yeah, I mean, kind of following up with Deborah, I mean, it's like a second career. We're asking, you know, in some ways, if I look through this PowerPoint, our teachers and principals are, and that's what I want to sort of dive into a little bit is, you know, I see lots of training and then, but you know, sort of who's, who's on the ground implementing, you know, is it professional service? So I'll get to that. So I've got page eight, though, I mean, just what a shocking and sad, just ugly graph that, that is. I'm going to do some digging on this because, you know, just, yeah, I don't know. I mean, you look at from nineteen seventy to two thousand twenty-two, and it's just, it just smacks you right in the face on what's, what's going on. I mean, it's the sanctity and value of human life, it just, you know, that's, so we won't get into that, not, not today, anyway. So page eighteen, it, so who would be providing the training, the district-level trainings to families in collaboration? I'm not sure I understand.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so members of the Guilford Parent Academy team actually provide this training as well as our, our mental health coordinators and specialists.
So, oh, see, I see GPA, okay. GPA is Guilford, okay, I wasn't sure what that was. Okay. Guilford Parent Academy. So they're given the training? How are, what training are they getting?
Yeah, so they, they actually receive training from our, from our internal psychologists.
I got it. So I'm just following the continuum of, okay, so our internal staff trains the Guilford Parent Academy, and then they are going into the schools, or they're accessible?
I mean, recently, they've been, I mean, schools will host. The past year and a half, a lot of them have been virtual, so less well-attended. But many times when schools have a family night, they'll say, can somebody from Parent Academy come? And then someone who's licensed to train or to co-deliver the content can do that. These are best received when hosted at the school, like if a principal says, we really want to have a presentation on this, then we plan accordingly. And then there's also, you know, sign up for this webinar to support and things like that. But in full transparency, we're not getting to nearly the number of people that we need to. It's a huge on-take. And so, but I, just to your point, the development of the training and the delivery of the training happens jointly across departments.
Okay. So I've got two more pages. Page twenty-two, the aligned activities, and I'll have to study this a little more because there's a lot of aligned activities. The School-Based Mental Health Services, and you referenced the thirteen of our Title I schools direct. At one time, I remember, just anecdotally, at Grimsley, they had a, the, the licensed professional therapist counselors were in the school so that mom and dad didn't have to drive them or make, you know, transportation a challenge, which can be challenging. And it was done very discreetly, and it, and the principals were on board at the time because it didn't take away class time. I know there were some, somehow they executed all that, and it, and it seemed, so are we still doing that? Are we, do we still have these professional agencies in the schools working, like hand and glove?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the case.
Yeah, okay. So that, that, that's what you're, right, right. Yeah, yeah. It was just, when I first got on the board, I thought, well, that's really cool, and I learned more about it, and then it sort of went away, and I.
There's national partnerships. I mean, there's school-based health services, and then there's school-linked health services. And so I think what we're doing with Kone has a lot of promise in terms of the telehealth to address both physical and mental health needs. I do think we have to think very carefully about sustainability. School-linked services are when you contract with an agency to do exactly what you're talking about, to send the therapist in with parental consent and deliver on-site.
And that's called school-linked?
School-linked health services.
That's school-linked. So I don't see that any, is that, we're, we're doing that?
We, we, there's not providers. I mean, we, there's not enough providers to bring in. If you think about the number of schools and the backup that the county has, that Board Member Napper referenced, there's really a provider shortage. I do think we're engaged in good conversations right now with Kone Health and some other community agencies to broaden that reach, but that's not happening consistently outside of those thirteen schools referenced here.
Okay, okay. And I know this is more conceptual, there's not as many details. So the last, the last page. So the last, the last page is twenty, page twenty-seven. All this looks wonderful. I mean, I think we'd all agree this, we need to be doing these things. I mean, are there price tags to all this that we can, we'll get into? Just, because like a client of mine once told me, yeah, it's a beautiful PowerPoint, but there's no price tags and there's sort of, and I'm just assuming that we'll get into that.
So things like the Character Ed curriculum, for example, and resources to address mental health and resources to establish community agencies are mostly in our ESER plan. There's a whole thing about providing mental health supports. But again, you don't want to hire a lot of people. You want to train up what we have so that we can sustain beyond when those grants sunset. There are some recurring costs that are in the student services budget. Pre-K, for example, uses a second-step curriculum where they're learning skills each day about how to socially interact. And that sits with pre-K. So I would say that there's different, it's a blend of sources here. But there's a lot of money in training because of what those dollars were designed to do post-pandemic.
Yeah, what will help me when we get to that point is, is having some sort of org chart that, I just feel like, do we have enough humans, people to do it all?
No.
I mean.
The state doesn't fund mental health support for schools.
This is like, you've got a whole nother sort of enterprise.
That's the other thing is, Pat, when you're talking about the shortage, what I'm talking about is licensed professional counselors that any of us in this room right now could sign up to go see. Four to six-month wait. The farther you get down the specialty ladder, the worse it is. So right now, we've gone from LPC to pediatric, eighteen and younger. So, and then we've got all the way down to EC, which is an entirely different certification when it comes to counseling. And, you know, I mean, right now, especially marriage counselors, you can't get one. So it's specific, the farther we go into this and the farther down this goes as far as the certifications and things to address these things, the longer you wait.
We're training our teachers and counselors.
Right, and that just seems, I mean, that's, that is great. I mean, I just, I don't know, I just, we're just, I know we're putting a lot of.
Yeah, the, the school personnel who can provide mental health services include school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, and mental health coordinators. We're not sending every classroom teacher to that whole list of training. That's not reasonable. But what we do need to have is resources that we can pull from when these groups say, we need help with this. Or we're seeing trends in our data that point to the vaping. We have to have tools in our box to help people have those supports.
Yeah, okay. And what are, just, and this will be a promise, my last one, tools to identify these? I mean, how are we, is that part of the training? I mean, they're looking to see what's, because I think so many times it's just hidden. Everybody says, oh, we had no idea. We just, we didn't know that, we didn't, you know, we couldn't see it. And I wish I would have had this conversation. I wish I would have given them a hug. We don't know.
Well, and the boards had some of that, like with the NC CASA training, and we talked about signs of different kinds of trauma. But it's not just, it's, it's not the same for every individual. So you have to look at trends of, of data, trends of referrals, listen to counselors about what they're hearing, look at attendance patterns, but also, you know, listen to the licensed-trained mental health providers on what we should be looking for when we're not the trained provider.
We also update and provide a digital toolkit to our principals and assistant principals every year. And we plan to actually train our principals and assistant principals during the Summer Leadership Institute on those things.
So would this be a time, like, looking at timelines? Is this something we, like, this fall is starting? Is this a, help me with the timing?
Yeah, so I mean, some of, the, the, the training depends on the audience. The principals and assistant principals will kick it off at our Leadership Institute at the end of July. And then we'll phase in the training for those other providers, such as the counselors that they're back to school. You know, and it is department-dependent.
And you, you mentioned a work session. I was going to say, that, I think that would be helpful because this is so much in here and this is just, you said, it's more.
And it's just one part.
Right, so, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, then Linda.
Okay, let me start with this one because, and I know we already have some relationships with our colleges and universities that are in Guilford County. But just like we've gone out to try to encourage teachers or would-be teachers to come and participate, have we looked at the schools that offer the disciplines that we need as far as them doing their internship or any of that? Or is that even legal? Can we do that? You understand the question?
I think so. What I hear you asking is, are we seeking opportunities to partner with colleges and universities to address some of these gaps that we see in services? And the answer to that question is yes. There's a number of different partnerships that we're working on right now and some that we actually have in place that provide us with, like our youth mental health first aid training, that's in partnership with, I believe, a university.
Okay, well, I think if there's a way to strengthen, because we got, you know, we have seven colleges and universities in Guilford County. And then if we go fifty miles out, fifty-five miles out, that adds another fifteen, sixteen universities. And what I'm asking is, is that, just like, I think at a previous meeting, there was incentives to get math teachers to come here. Can we do those same kinds of things since Dr. Oakley said that the ESER funds sundown in twenty-four? So we need to build capacity. Well, could part of that capacity be to, to try to connect with, you know, juniors, seniors, or even graduate students? To see if they would be, you know, if, if they'll come and work with us? Is that possible?
I think that's a great idea, but it's something that we'll have to get back to you on. I think it's a part of us looking at resources across the community, thinking about sustainability as well, as well as right fit.
Okay, the hotline, I think you referred to it that we put in place when COVID started. We're still going to keep it?
We'll be able to keep it in some form through the sunset of those dollars.
Okay, do you have any idea of how effective it has been?
We've had more than two hundred and thirty kids and/or staff access it.
Just this week or two weeks ago, the President signed his gun law, but in it was supposed to be mental health dollars. Do we have any way of knowing if those will reach down to our level? Or, you know what I'm talking about, there was some mental.
We won't know yet until we know how those dollars are routed through the state level.
But you do know that in that, in what he signed, there was.
I did see that.
Yeah, some, some mental health dollars. And I think it was because of the school shootings, you know, that they were there. So I'm sure y'all will try to figure out, how do we see if those trickle down to us? Or if we're going to do the same thing that's been done before, whether it comes to the state and then the state decides, you know, whether we'll get it or not, right? Okay, so we're looking at it. How do, how do we respond to a student who has a loss? I had a situation last year where a family member called me because a kid had lost his mother suddenly and, like in November. And by January, he was declining as far as what he was doing and whatever. So when I called the principal, he had no clue that this child was in trouble. And, you know, as a result of the call, then, you know, he did graduate. But if the intervention of the family member calling and saying, you know, this child needs help, do we have something in place where we know or we find out? Or can we, is there something that a person can do to say, okay? Like, the person knew me, so they called me. But, you know, they shouldn't have had to wait until mid-January to ask for help for this child when his, his, his mother died that November. Do you understand my question?
Yeah, what I hear you saying is that there, there are times when school leaders need to be very responsive to the needs of students and it may not be very apparent that a student is suffering. But how can we put in some interventions that will actually be proactive, right? Yeah, so this is something that, what I've mentioned earlier about relationship mapping between students and adults so that students and adults could actually understand what's happening. We also have our training through the Sandy Hook Promise. We actually train teachers on how to identify those symptoms and signs that students are experiencing, mental illness or depression or stress.
Okay.
And that, and I understand you, but, you know, this was, was a football player. Not that all football players are tough. But he, he didn't, he didn't reach out. It was a family member who saw him, you know, grades dropping, that kind of stuff. And so I guess, is there something we can say to either our students or to parents that if you have a kid who is in crisis or has a loss or whatever the, you know, the punch points are, this is what you do?
Yeah, so what we have are our school counselors, our school social workers. We have school teams that are there to respond to situations like that.
Okay, you're not hearing me. The school counselors didn't, that's what I'm saying, until an outside intervention of that phone call. And all I'm just saying is that as we're dealing with kids, you know, you, you had a slide here that talked about how many kids may have lost a caregiver or a family member just because of COVID. This, this person didn't die because of COVID. They had a sudden heart attack. So all I'm saying is there needs to be something else that indicates to students or to families that if something happens with a kid, that somebody in the school building knows that, you know, Johnny's not acting? Or, you know, where is Johnny? Or something like that. And I, and I understand they got a lot of things on their plate. But like I said, if it hadn't been for this phone call and this intervention, I don't think this, I think this kid would have dropped off.
I think, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I also think we're not going to catch everything. We're just not. But I do think we can create, you know, communication plans with parents and families of if you see something or know of somebody, here's the best way to contact. I think, I think we can do more of that, of that outreach work and should. I also think our partnerships with local law enforcement agencies, the, the works, like when, when Mr. Ritchie knows of something that has happened that impacts either directly or indirectly one of our families, he makes that connection so that the school can respond. But I don't know that there's this foolproof strategy that's ever going to catch everything. But to your point, I think communication about what to do if you know a student needs help is something that we can always improve on.
Okay. And then my last question really speaks to the comment, I think, that the last speaker made about letting our kids know what the real world is like. Do we have a way of, of having a conversation? Like when the Uvalde shooting happened? It happened in a school. It happened to children. Did we, when those kinds of events happen, do we feel like, oh, well, we'll just let parents deal with that? Or do we have conversations?
Yeah, we're responsive to that. So whenever there's been like a school shooting, whether it's here in Guilford County or nearby or even across the country, what we do is we try to actually put in our school counselors or social workers to be more responsive to the needs of students and to address those issues proactively, to talk about school violence, to talk about how students are feeling about it, engaging them proactively so that they can express themselves, so that we can know how we can support them.
Thank you. Linda, then Winston.
First thing I want to ask, or more of a statement. We're not assessing children. We are simply being aware of activity, right?
That's correct.
So I just want to make that clear to everyone that we're not giving any assessments, we're not doing any testing mentally. When we see behavior that is concerning, then we are, they're trained to kind of like say, hey, maybe I need to check on the student and, and those things. I do want to know where the parent engagement happens when the school system recognizes there's a, a concern. You know, like Deborah said, sometimes they don't want to talk to their parents. I got that. But the parent is critical in that dynamic, no matter what it is. So, and I didn't really see, you know, I just want to make sure that that parent's engaged as a parent.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Like, there's no way that we can provide adequate support to students without engaging their parents. We understand that that's a critical factor in supporting students across the district. We, we totally understand that. Parents are always informed when we see signs and symptoms of distress or depression or other mental health issues, always.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because somewhere in this, we need to make it apparent that the parent is, and it's not as apparent as I would like it, that the parent will be engaged. You know, depending, I don't want the, I don't want the counselor or the teacher to know something for an extended period of time and in trying to protect the student in their own mind, do not provide that information to the parent. So I'm just making that clear. The other thing on Diane's situation, you know, I do understand where she's coming. We always tell them when it, you know, you're talking about violence in our schools. See something, say something. You can expand that to, if you see your friend struggling, make sure, and you know something is happening in that, in your friend's life, let a counselor know, you know? So you kind of can extend that to the kids that if you see a friend hurting because you know of trauma in their life, please tell their counselor so that your friend can get that help. So it's kind of like, you see something, say something. Because these kids are also, when they, they hit that kind of crisis are also your ones that are going to attempt, maybe go to suicide or find endless. So you can depend on their, you can kind of encourage their friends because they have friends in the school. So we just need to maybe expand that, see something, say something on, you know, the guns, weapons, we say that, you know, to if you see your friends in stress or you know they're in distress due to a certain, you know, step up and tell a counselor that, because that may identify that situation a lot quicker. And it may just be, kids don't think it. They don't think to tell. So that would be the only other thing I would say. And I was going to ask about the hotline, but Diane already did.
Thank you. No, your point is very well-received. I think that the central theme in all of our trainings that we shared today is that we want to be really intentional about the lines of communication and make sure that we're engaging our families, engaging our teachers, our social workers. It's going to have to take our community inside and outside of the school to address these things proactively.
Thank you, Winston.
Yeah, I really have a statement or an observation more than a question, which is that we're at this moment of this perfect storm where collectively as adults, we are complicit in creating the conditions that kids are now responding to in completely rational ways, given the irrationality that we've created. And then we blame them for the ways they navigate, you know, and try to fix them. And, and we need to support them. We need to do this and be reminded that, that the Rubik's Cube of choices we make about shrinking dollars for, you know, educators and, and not having a pipeline that's going to create lots of new educators. I mean, and being more focused on class size than how districts can create time and space for adults in the building to build relationships and how we increase lateral entry teachers, which can be good, but they've got to spend time learning how to be teachers when we need to be training them. They got to learn pedagogy when we really need to be helping them understand how to respond to trauma. We create regulations or threaten regulations that teachers should post all their curriculum so it can be monitored for CRT. And people talk about SEL is code word for CRT. And, and so then you have teachers having to do this rather than build relationships with kids and, and go to quality training that helps them in those relationships identify the things that kids need and communicate more with parents and build relationships with parents. So, I mean, we, we increase enrollment in charter schools to buy eight thousand kids over a decade, which the intention of that may not have been nefarious, but it stripped extra resources away from districts. So what do you do? You cut counselors and you cut nurses and you increase the caseload of school counselors. You cut counselors and you cut nurses and you increase the caseload of school counselors. And so Pat, you're right, I mean, we're asking people to do two jobs, to teach math, to teach social studies and civics and stats and French and biology and physics and, you know, how to count and how to tell your numbers and your colors while, you know, being a mental health provider. And, um, all of the choices that we've made sort of meet this perfect storm moment. And so it is, I think, a work session where we sort of own all those dynamics. I mean, I appreciate the incredible work you're doing, the way that teachers and counselors and school staff are stepping up, bus drivers and cafeteria workers and maintenance staff are building relationships with kids. I mean, as Nora Carr used to say to us all the time, you know, one caring adult in a kid's life can make all the difference, and sometimes that's the bus driver and sometimes it's a parent and sometimes it's a teacher. And it, it's really extraordinary, you know, the job that we're tasking you with and all the choices we make to do other stuff that comes out of the back end of a bull, you know, that we spend energy on that's not this. And so I just, you know, we up here on the dais and in the community just have to take responsibility for this. We have more concentrated poverty than we did a decade ago, we have fewer resources, we have more guns available, um, we've had a global pandemic and, and we're putting fewer adults in the building and giving them less time to be in relationship with kids. And, um, so this is not hogwash, it's incredibly important. Nobody's going to be able to learn math and reading and physics if they can't concentrate and focus, if they don't feel safe, um, if they don't feel seen. And that is not sort of liberal hooey stuff, like it matters for humans. And so I just, some of the rhetoric that we perpetuate and some of the actual decisions we make collectively as adults are all, they're all contributing to this. And so, um, anyway, I just, I hold that accountability pretty strongly and, um, I want to continue to support the staff and the work. Um, I will say I'm grateful for Cone Health, I've, in my capacity at G A, we have had an opportunity to work on finding private funding for expanding the telehealth project, which is initially focused on physical health, I mean, why we separate physical health and mental health, the brain is part of the body, but, and they get coupled together. But the example you gave at Bessemer and had an opportunity to talk to the doctors who were driving that program, and we've been meeting with funders and there's a lot of interest in the community and supporting that, expanding across elementary schools is the goal, but that everyone sees the potential for how staff could access that, how it might unfold in middle and high schools, and how it could help provide mental health services too. And so I do think there are reasons to be optimistic, but it will take us bringing some new resources, a new way of thinking and separating ourselves from some of the things we've done collectively as adults to create the conditions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Winston. Um, I have, I've talked to Dr. Oakley about the data on page four, the CDC, about Asian children. I mean, one, the disparity is disturbing and significant period, the racial disparity. And I'm not sure, um, what, what that looks like in Guilford County or really what it looks like overall, because Guilford County or Greensboro is a refugee resettlement agency and have been for quite a while. And so whether it was, um, Montney yards many, many years ago, I know we've been a, um, a resettlement agency for people from Ukraine, and so those, um, and people coming here with no resources, um, are often exploited, no peer support, language issues, all kind of things that make them more and more vulnerable to any kind of a hardship. And so, um, just want to make sure that if that is, that if these numbers are similar to what we have here in Guilford County, that there are some targeted, um, approaches or partnerships or collaborations to address that. So for Asians to be 4.5 times more likely to have lost a parent or another caregiver to COVID is, um, is really disturbing, um, as it is for, for all, anybody that loses anyone. The other thing, and I think, um, Winston, it just maybe dovetails on what you were just sharing, is I think context again is really important. And as we talk about trauma-informed approaches that, um, you know, where that came from was pretty fascinating to me, and it's something that came from the eighties, I may have mentioned this at a board meeting before, but there was a physician, uh, for Kaiser, uh, in California, I think it was the chief of preventive medicine, and ran this sort of weight loss clinic and like half of the patients dropped out. And, um, he was really, really concerned about why half of the patients were dropping out, so just kept digging into it and digging into it and found that they were actually successful at losing weight. I mean, someone had dropped from 300 pounds to 200 pounds, and it was just like, why would they drop out? And so he interviewed hundreds of the people that exited the program and asked a series of questions, you know, what, how much did you weigh when you were born? How much did you weigh when you started first grade? How much did you weigh when you graduated from high school? When'd you get married? How old were you when you were sexually active? And then he said that out of the discomfort of asking people about their sexual activity, he actually misspoke and said, how much did you weigh when you were first sexually active? And one of his patients said 40 pounds. And what he found out is that half of the people that he interviewed had a very similar answer. And so why certain groups have high ACE scores, adverse childhood experiences? If we just deal with the trauma and not the environment that creates the trauma, then we'll just be doing that forever. It goes back to the fish fixing, um, allegory that we focus on individual circumstances and approaches. And, um, most of those patients were white because the, um, people that were in the clinic were people who were part of the health plan at Kaiser. Um, and so, um, different groups have different exposure to different things for many reasons. And that context is going to be really important. I, we had a brief conversation with the city manager, um, because he is interested in developing some kind of inter-systems collaboration, because housing impacts education, education impacts housing, um, all of this impacts public safety and exposure to environmental burdens and all kinds of things, which are going to boost your numbers up, which means you need a higher level of trauma-informed resources. And so when we don't provide that context about the concentrated poverty and race, and, and I've said before, we have significantly more poor white people on public assistance. But racially, they have not been segregated to an area, so while they may be experiencing enormous hardships, they're more likely to have access to better schools, to the infrastructure that other people who are wealthier around them can provide, and that, um, you know, those things are boost when you are suffering. Um, and so, um, when we don't have that contextual information, then the ideological explanations run amok. And we, we are living in that kind of polarized environment right now. So, so I just want to make sure that we don't give these without, um, that context and some information.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Betty?
I'm gonna change it up a little bit. Um, just want to give you a compliment on, um, from, from several, several parents. Um, the social and emotional learning coach at the high schools, I would say that they have really stepped up and helped a lot of students when they were devastated, whether it was being homeless or whether it was, um, abusing the family or just being put out. Um, I will say that, that is great, they have done a great job. Um, I wish, of course, we had some therapeutic counseling, but I do know there's a shortage and I know that company's fun, but I do want to give kudos to the social emotional behavior, um, counselor. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Deborah's using her last question request for tonight.
Right, um, not a question. So, um, Dr. Oakley and I have been discussing, um, trying to, uh, expand and update our medical-based CTEs, um, after walkthrough at Northern and taking a look at the equipment there. And I do know to Diane's point that UNC G has a counseling program all the way up to the doctorate level. Maybe as we expand the medical CTE, we could maybe look at throwing in some, um, behavioral health style stuff if we can partner with their doctorate level.
Yeah, I think we can, um, I, I think we can include what we have the capacity to do, but the workforce development is there. I mean, you know, that, that piece is there loud and clear.
Well, if we can put in a nursing pipeline and a mental health pipeline, we can just keep everybody right here. Make them ourselves. Um, so, okay, um, I'll touch base with a, I'm not there.
All right. And Diane's using her last one.
No, I haven't said that much. Um, this is before your time, I'm just curious to know, have we done any follow-up with the schools or students who were impacted because of the hurricane, uh, the tornado, which was now four years ago, right?
Not at a system level.
Okay, I, I mean, I just think that whenever, um, Chairman Hayes, you know, she, she constantly pushes us paying attention to trauma. And that if was, I mean, for Greensboro, uh, that was significant tra- trauma. We lost, uh, three schools, but then it impacted, if I remember correctly, more like 20 schools or students from about 20 schools, uh, you know? And I just wonder, now, some of those kids have probably graduated, but, you know, if you, if you go into East Greensboro, there's still scars, there's still tarts, there's still, um, houses that have not been, um, repaired. So I just wonder, uh, I know we did a good job of reaching out and trying to be there for those kids, but, you know, those who were in those elementary schools would now be, some in middle school, uh, but some would be in their perhaps last years of elementary school. And, I mean, we move on, yes, but I, I just think that that might be a group that if there's a way for us to just see, how you doing? You know, did you get to move back into your house? Or are you still homeless? Or just some kind of way to just have a gauge of what happened to tho- to, to that population of our school's, uh, system. So, and like I said, that was before your time, but, uh, you know, it might be worth us looking at.
She sounds so mousy on that. Go ahead, Kim. Can you try again?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, um, you know, for the presentation. And I know that, you know, we have a lot to ask, um, but I would challenge, uh, Dr. Robinson to put a cost to everything that this board is asking for, the counselors, the nurses, give us a budget for those things, so this way we know what to ask for as well. Because you can't do it without the resources and we cannot continue to have unfunded mandates of anyone, anything that we want to get done for children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you for the opportunity to share our work and for your very thoughtful feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now at action items, and I will turn to, uh, Policy Chair Committee, Betty Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the policy number 3542, it's a new policy expressing the board's vision for all second grade students to have access to the Learn to Swim classes. Um, it has been out for public comment for 30 days, and we have not received any comments that were through the period of May 31st through June 30th. I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy 3542.
Second.
Access to water safety instruction as presented.
All right. Thank you, Kim. I think Diane had seconded that. Diane?
Um, I, of course, you know, this, uh, delights my heart beyond, uh, but I do want to say that, um, the, the program at the end of its 10th year, which is this past school year, trained 10,695 second graders overall, the ti- over the 10 years. I don't know what that means as far as, um, life saves, but I know it is significant. And we also did, uh, the program thanks to the Page Boosters for 100, um, Page High School students after the tragic loss of one of their classmates. This coming year, the, uh, GAC intends to, um, have 43 schools, um, in this program. So every year they've added, uh, more schools. The challenge is going to be, uh, we, is everybody needs manpower, we need teachers, uh, we need, uh, people who want to spend three hours in a pool with second graders. And so if anybody's interested, if they would get in touch with the Aquatic Center, uh, Rebecca Kersey is the coordinator for the Learn to Swim program. And so I appreciate, um, Dr. Contreras, uh, wanting to see this, uh, policy passed. And I, I think that we just don't know what the benefit will be. And I encourage any of you to come get your swimming trunks and come join me in the pool, uh, coming with the new schools, school year. Uh, they'll probably start after about the second or third week of school, but I'll get the schedule and send it, you know? Have, have Dr., uh, Fundaburk, send it out to everybody when I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Fundaburk, can we vote using our device here? Kim, I'll get to you in just a minute. Okay. Okay, Kim, how do you vote? Thank you. And that passes nine to zero. And we're now at our final item, uh, on the agenda, and that is the 2022-2023 interim budget amendment. The administration recommends that the board approve amending the, um, 2022-2023 interim budget to include the $10 million appropriated by the Board of Commissioners for teacher supplements and the 3.2 million appropriated by the Board of County Commissioners for school administrator supplements. Angie, anything else? Sarah second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Any.
Okay, no discussion, all right. Use your devices and let's vote, please. Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes by a vote of nine to zero. I'm sorry. Anita?
I know we've already voted, but question, um, the 10 million is divided among how many people about?
We have about five thousand, so it's a, it's divided among all of our licensed staff, they're paid off the teacher's salary schedule, so it's a little over 5,000 is, is what my memory is.
And the 3.2?
So it's divided over the 126 principals and 140, if you remember the exact number of hun- it's 140 plus, between 140 and 150 assistant principals.
Thank you.
All right, we're now at, um, board comments. Uh, we'll start with you. We do? We have a closed session?
Yes, we do.
It said if needed.
If needed.
All right. Anita?
I move we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters protected by state law.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right.[1644.71]
All right. We're now back in open session. And I would like to turn to Board Member Diane Bellamy Smalls.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an addendum to the personnel report for the administrative departments of Principal School Support Officer, Chief and Senior Advisor.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Dr. Oakley.
Thank you. Please join me in welcoming Tiffany Hinton, Principal of Sumner Elementary School, Donovan Hoskins, School Support Officer, Angie Henry, shifting to role of Senior Advisor to the Superintendent, and Tara Trexler, shifting to the role of Interim Chief Financial Officer.
Great, thank you. All right, now we're at Board Comments, and I will start with you, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you. I'd like to say I would echo our Board Chair about the family of Nora Carr. Just wanted to say my condolences to you, and please let us know if there's anything we can do for you. As far as my restart schools, I will see you soon. I would like for the students' families to please enjoy the next couple of weeks because school will be starting soon for the restart school. And thank you, staff, for all you do. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah.
I would like to echo the condolences for Nora. She and I only knew each other very briefly, but the one thing I can say for sure is that she was always very, very patient and very, very kind with, you know, the one person who has to ask eight million questions. I'd like to thank Eric Nagley and Page High School for hosting the summer camps this week. My daughter is in band camp. She is loving every last minute of it. And between the environment at Page being so welcoming and the band director at Northern, who's put on such a northern middle, who's put on such a fantastic camp, we've gone from being terrified of band in the fall to being very enthusiastic. So it's been a welcome shift, and you can see kind of firsthand what we were talking about with how the, you know, it just takes one person, one staff member on one level to impact a kid and completely change their outlook on what's going on. I've seen that happen firsthand this week, and it's very encouraging. And so on that note, I would like to take a moment and thank all of our staff members who contact our kids for the impact that they have, because it is very, very real. And a lot of times, the vast majority of the time, it's very, very positive. That was a big shift for her. She was really scared. She was talking about chorus, talking about changing all her classes, and now she's back on the bandwagon, which makes this band very, very happy. Finally, I would like to say thank you for our teachers. If you guys will keep an eye on Facebook pages, you'll see a lot of Amazon wish lists as Prime Day rolls around. You'll also see a lot of parents having panic attacks as these school supplies reappear in Target and Walmart. The elementary school supply lists are up. Middle and high school are coming out. Parents, keep your eyes peeled, and if you catch any good sales, please share them. And I hope everybody is having a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Anita?
Very briefly, as I told Kevin Carr, the world was a better place when Nora was with us, and my condolences have been expressed to him and the family. Hope everybody had a great vacation week, those who got to take it. Parking lot was rather empty every day when I came by, so a lot of you availed yourselves of that week. Everybody needs to finish enjoying their summer, because before you know it, we'll be back. Thank you all.
Thank you. Diane?
I hope our staff know that people see them in the community. Every morning at 7:15, I drive down Four Seasons Boulevard going to do my workout at the pool. And I've noticed the staff at Archer, at their post, waiting for the children to come. And I just want to say kudos, because a lot of times, nobody pays attention or says anything, and I'm afraid to stop and tell them, because then they would go, oh, my God, a board member's watching us, and I don't really want them to feel that. I just want them to know that I do, we see them, and we appreciate them being out there at 7:15 in the morning. As far as, I can't even talk about Nora, because they said, one of the stories they told was that she was directionally challenged, and I didn't know that before I got in the car with her. But we went down to Pinehurst, and she got lost. So the next time we went on a road trip, I drove. So I just, you know, only God knows why he takes the best of us first. But maybe it's to be a message to the rest of us to do better, and to give our Nora Carr every time we work with children or this community. I'll miss her. I missed her whenever she left here, because she was kind of my signal person. She would let me know if I was on track or not. And one day I asked her, I said, did I do the right thing? She said, child, you say what I can't say. So I'm gonna miss her. We do need to encourage people to get their COVID vaccinations. COVID is on the rise again. We're not seeing a lot of it on the news, but we do need to pay attention to that, particularly with our kids and families coming back to school. Want to welcome Dr. Oakley? You look good in that seat, girl. So just hang in there. We won't do you too badly on things. And then my last comment has to do with a first responder. Fire engineer Rick Morell. When I was on city council, I had an opportunity to meet him. And our first responders do do a lot for our schools. A lot of times, we aren't aware of it, but, you know, when a crisis happens, our school is either the police, or fire, or both, that show up. So I hope that we will keep the young man who is accused of causing the accident, his family, because he lost family that day, too, and that we'll also keep the Morell family and all of our firefighters and first responders, because every time they go out, they don't necessarily know that they're going to come home. So we need to also keep our first responders and our fire department in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, my comments are gonna begin and end with our friend, Dr. Nora Carr. You know, anytime you attend funerals or services, no one ever talks about how much money you had in the bank, or where you lived, or any of those things. It's whose lives did you touch? And clearly, you know, she had a huge impact on my naivete with all of this, and I could always count on, you know, her to be firm and fair on everything, no matter the issue. So personally, just want to say to Kevin and Casey and Erin and Tara, you know, my condolences, and no words can ever help in this time of great bereavement, but I did want to share that. And all of the stories, many that were untold about Nora's life, you know, she lived it every day, and the one thing that I'll take from her is, you know, there's really no finish line, you know? When you think you've accomplished something, you know, you've got more to give. And so I just wanted to share those thoughts with, about Nora Carr and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Linda?
I'm always usually really strong, since I have to say it. Nora was a one of a kind. I mean, she was, she proved many of my own papers. I'm directionally challenged like she is, so you didn't want the two of us in the same car. But she was a class act, achieved more than anybody could possibly think. She went way beyond I have any dreams of doing. So she's gonna leave such, such a huge hole in so many people's lives, and we were blessed to have her while we had her. So that's what I will say.
Thank you, Linda. Winston?
Keep it short. Whitney, glad to have you here. Angie, glad you're sticking around. And I think one of the greatest small acts that I saw last week and in the last 10 days and I remember it says of Nora was how her colleagues, you all in this room, covered the cost of the wake. I think there was one text sent that said, if you'd like to help, and then dollars, $10, $20, $100, $200 kept pouring in, and it covered the full cost of that sort of traditional Irish wake at Oden Brewery, which the family chose. We had talked with them about a variety of places where that could happen, and they were so moved by that, and I think it was such a testimony to how each of you and each of us have been deeply impacted by her. So I was also struck by how personal the funeral was, and how Casey and Erin and Tara and Kevin really wanted this to be about Nora, the mother, the sister, the wife, the human. And of course, they all know she loved to work. The only thing she, you know, loved more than work was her family, but she loved to work, and so that was certainly evident in all of the comments and those present. It was just deeply personal about her as a human being, and it was really nice to see so many staff and colleagues and former colleagues and just show up as humans to celebrate another human. And so, you know, all of you here tonight on staff, I mean, Kimberly and Angie, well, Jill, you're not staff, you're lawyers, I guess you're human. But she could take it. Ebony and Rebecca, Dominic Marshall, who's here, Michelle and Shirley and Chris and Charity and Juice Mar, Michelle, I think, and Lee, Shirley's back there, Wanda. You know, you're just humans showing up every day, trying to do the best for these kids, and we really appreciate that about you, and I know Nora did. And maybe we can just be reminded of our humanness in this work because of her.
I was gonna say, Dr. Oakley, nice having you up here. I'm getting used to it. But I can't say more about Nora. Her service was beautiful and touching, and it was so nice to be able to see her family that way. And Nora would get a kick out of this, because we did a lot, we grew a lot in our equity work together, but, you know, I'm black, and so when they said the repass was at the brewery, you know, I was like, okay, I can roll with that. And so I went and had a ball, and so it was, it was a really wonderful time. Kevin is amazing. The kids are fantastic. They did a wonderful job. And Nora's passing, you know, just calls your faith into some questions sometimes, as strong as it is. And so I look forward to being there for Kevin and the family and remembering Nora always. I'd also like to recognize the Carolyn Coleman Week of Peace, and it started yesterday. Today, there was a peace drive. Tomorrow, there will be a 6:00 PM citywide prayer vigil at the Beloved Community Center at 417 Arlington Street. July 14th, there will be a 4:00 PM community cookout at Smith Homes on Luray Drive. And then July 15th, there will be a Health and Job Fair, 2031 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, from 10:00 AM to 4:00. And then July 16th, from 12:00 to 6:00, there will be a block party featuring Canada's Forum and a resolution reading, and that again will be at 2301 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. And that's organized by a number of organizations, but Ingram Bell and Cure Violence is one of those. So if you can make it to any of those, if you need the information, I'll be glad to send you the flyer. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? I said, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, staff and visitors, and good evening, board members.